Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Sevenek.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Zalinski has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Just a quick comment. I am in full support of resuming televised council meetings on TV. Not everyone has access to the Internet and not everyone is going to go to the library and sit there for four hours. Citizens of this community worked diligently to get them televised years ago. We were a leader in the community and now we are the last to have them resumed. So, I urge you to do that. Funds are available. What I'd really like to comment on is the last meeting. On the agenda, we keep having items appear randomly that aren't coming through committee. And the one that I wanted to speak to is the sale of 87 Racine Street. First off, items that come before the council... If...how do I say this? It's not the mayor...it's the mayor's responsibility and duty to take items that come before him and allocate them to the proper committee. It's not up to the mayor and staff to work out the details and then put it on the agenda to vote on. These items should have been referred to committee and contingencies and whatever, worked out at that point with a recommendation to the common council. The common council can accept those recommendations or refer it back to committee to work on it some more. It shouldn't just randomly appear. Secondly, the way it read on the agenda was the sale of 87 Racine Street. If that's what you did, you sold one parcel. You did not sell three parcels. And if you thought you sold three parcels, that was a violation of open meetings law because it was incorrect. The sales document said 87 Racine Street. So, you sold one parcel for $87,000. You did not sell all three parcels. And if you now want to go back and cross it off, it's wrong. That whole thing is null and void as far as I am concerned, and it should start over. And the mayor was in a rush to get it through. The other item I had a major problem with was that Alderman Nichols was prohibited from making an amendment, a counteroffer. And there was a point of order taken that she was outside of what was being discussed. The same property in past negotiations and past offers had numerous counteroffers made. And the mayor and the attorney never said that those Aldermen could not make those counteroffers. I think it was just at that time, they didn't want to sell it for the intent. And I'm not speaking...I don't know what this project is, other than from what I could tell from the conversation, it's a fast food joint. So, it's not up to me to decide whether or not that's what's appropriate for this area. But I know the mayor was not in favor of just a parking lot. But all of this should have gone through the Plan Commission or the Administration Committee. It shouldn't just randomly appear on the agenda. The Avalon property shouldn't have just randomly appeared on the agenda. A year or so ago, there was an offer to take over the old Corps of Engineer building. That shouldn't have just randomly appeared on the agenda. It seems like when the mayor wants to get something through, he just throws it on there and hope that everybody just passes it without asking questions. Along with this particular parcel, there are major issues that need to be discussed. First and foremost, the Plan Commission mandatorily is supposed to review anything that changes the ingress and egress. Alderman Taylor tried to bring that up and was shut down. And that it would be discussed at Plan Commission. Well, you don't do it after the fact. You don't put contingencies on after you accept the offer. There's also major concerns regarding eminent domain. That one parcel was taken by eminent domain. And according to state statutes, actually Supreme Court.
Mrs. Taylor, we're at five and a half minutes at this point.
Mayor Ossman, unanimous consent.
Do we have unanimous consent to continue hearing? We do not have unanimous consent.
Take a vote.
So, it was at five minutes and 30 seconds when we stopped her. So, if you'd like to take a vote, we can take a vote. So, what is the...what is the motion? For unlimited time or...
Allow for her to...how long?
Should we set it to five minutes?
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Well, we need to have...so, the motion is to allow her to continue for another additional five minutes.
It probably won't take that long. But are you voting on this?
We need to vote first.
Okay.
We can...we can just do a voice vote.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Regarding eminent domain, the Wisconsin Supreme Court made clear that public use under the Wisconsin Constitution does not mean merely a public benefit. Instead, public use implies that the condemned property will actually be possessed by the public and that it's not sufficient that the public will receive incidental benefit from its condemnation. Meaning, just because you're going to put a building there and a parking lot does not imply that the public's going to benefit. Public...it belongs to the public, meaning it can only be used for public purposes. So, is that parking lot a public parking lot? Or should that remain green space? That needs to be discussed with the Plan Commission. And then, lastly, there are issues with the DNR. The land was given site closure. However, according to the DNR's closing letter, and it's really hard to find things now that nothing's on the Internet, there are many contingencies still in place with any excavation of that land. Groundwater contamination is president...is still present. Soil contamination exists that must be properly managed should it be excavated or removed. And the remaining soil contamination could result in vapor intrusion if further construction activities occur. All this stuff should have been discussed at Plan Commission before you sold one parcel. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak longer.
I'd just like to comment that we did not even need council approval to accept that offer. It was a full price offer and it did not...it did not need to even come to council. We thought it was appropriate to bring it to council. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hello, everyone. Mark Langdon, 724 Warsaw Street, Manasha. I just wanted to bring up also the televised meetings that you have on your agenda tonight under the action items for discussion and by Alderman Sevenek. And I remember Alderman Sevenek, when I was working with him, how proud he was that he always said how Manasha was a leader in the televised meetings. And then, everybody followed suit to us. And on my campaign trail for Alderman, I've had some people ask me about that. And I says, "Well, hopefully, if I win, I become Alderman. I will work hard to bring that back." I think $10,000 a year is peanuts for the people to have transparency. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. Do we have a motion for the minutes and communications? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to call the council to approve minutes.
A through J. I'm sorry. I wasn't on.
No.
I'll start over, Mayor. I'll move for approval that we approve minutes A through J and communications K through P.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Kruger? Oops. Actually, it's not liking me. The department head's mic, I don't think, was turned on. Would you guys mind? There's...it's not working either. There we go. Okay. I'm not sure if that's why. Nope. Okay. Well, we'll do it this way. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item N, I had put on the agenda. As an elected official, we're always interested in reducing costs in the community. That's definitely evident with the merger of our fire department, our health department, and our reciprocity agreements with other communities. This was brought to my attention, and I thought I would share some numbers. And there's also...Item O was not part of my numbers. That was added at a later time. And always interested in trying to reduce costs as they present themselves. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. On the N and O where it was explained, I just have a comment on Landmarks Commission minutes. In the minutes, I noticed that it's a...the Historical Society is still looking for that plaque that was on the hotel. And I'm going to explain this really quick again because I explained it to all parties involved last year. The plaque is not owned by anybody besides the person who actually put that plaque on that building, which was George Ponta Publishing, who is no longer alive and no longer in existence. So, that made it a orphaned plaque, and it's actually owned by the Wisconsin...
What is your point of order?
This is not part of Landmarks Commission's agenda. I know the Landmarks is the person that created this one. It's not the city business.
Was on the N? Was it on that?
Yeah, it was.
It's not part of their commission. It's a private matter. City was not...
Is it being...
I will let Alderman Kruger continue. I'm just trying to find it here on the...
It's under D.
Under D?
D, as in...
Oh, that's why I can't find it. If Alderman Kruger wishes to continue and discuss how it is owned, I'm okay with that if he wants to fill us in on what was discussed at the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the plaque is actually owned by the Wisconsin Historical Society. It's not owned by anybody else. It cannot be owned by the Manasha Historical Society, by Landmarks, by the city, by even by a private individual. And just to get clarification again, because I think this has been going on a little bit long here. I did contact Mr. Bernstein again, asked him again to make sure to clarify who is actually owns that plaque. And he did say it is the Wisconsin Historical Society. And there's one of two things that can actually happen with that plaque right now. And they're not going to enforce anything unless something's not done with it. It either can go back on that building or the current building at the same location that it was meant for. Otherwise, it has to be returned to the Wisconsin Historical Society to be destroyed. Those are the two options. It is owned by the state, not by anybody else. And they're not going to do anything. They're going to see if it gets put back on that building. But if it doesn't, then they're going to probably go ahead and try to recoup that plaque and get it destroyed if it does go back on the building. So, I just asked Sam that if he can contact the building owners to find out if that can go back on that building. And if it can, have the arrangements made to have it put back on there. If not, we can contact the Wisconsin Historical Society to get the plaque then. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
I just wanted to make sure my mic worked. No.
It does.
Alderman Taylor answered my question when I first turned it on. I just go and get it to shut off. Maybe I can't...
There's something going on with the system here. So, it won't...okay. Alderman Collier?
Can I go back on N?
Sure.
I understand why Alderman Taylor has this on there. The only problem I have with it is it's probably four or five years old. It's not a true answer to what's happening. Two years ago, I got asked to run for this job, and one of the people asked me to run for the simple reason to sue her, the attorney. And that'll be brought up in closed doors at a later date, I hope. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
And also, Mr. Collier made comments about that too, but we won't discuss that here tonight. We'll let the...we'll let time take care of that. Sam, this is not a...this plaque is not a city project, okay? It has nothing to do with your department or the city of Manasha.
Alderman Taylor?
I have been working with and asked over and over with the developers what they want to do with this plaque. They have not...because the family that had the plaque last asked me to see if the plaque could be put back there. The developers have not answered. And until the developers tell us that they would want to put their plaque back on the building, and I'm going to stop right there because this is not on the agenda and it's not city business, then let's not waste our time with it. It's a private matter.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to reiterate one more time. The plaque is owned by the state. No one else has any say on where that plaque goes. Not the building owners, not the developers, nothing. If they allow it on their property, it's allowed. This is via the state. It is owned by the state. That is all I'm saying. Thank you.
And Director Kyle and Director Buck did not allow this to become part of the Landmarks Commission, and it shouldn't appear on their agenda either. We'll discuss it further if you'd like. Thank you. It's a private matter.
I'd just like to make a comment on Item P, National Public Health Week. Director McKenney has done a wonderful job here with our community. We bring thousands and thousands of dollars of grant money back to our community to run health, safety, and food safety and other measures that really benefit our community. And I'd like to thank all of the members of the Health Department for the wonderful job that they're doing and the services they provide to our community. So, if there's no other comments, all those in favor of receiving the minutes and communications?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. Oops. Got two different agendas here. There are 11 items on the agenda this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of March 19th. The Administration Committee recommendations from March 19th to receive and spend public health emergency preparedness grant funds and communicable disease grant funds. 2018 operating budget adjustment of $4,650. The Board of Public Works recommendations from March 19th for the street use application for the Memorial Day Parade on May 28th. And just to note that the Memorial Day Parade will start at Main and Taco this year rather than Main and Milwaukee like it normally does because of road construction. Item four, the change order to Fifer Brothers Construction for the Fox River Loop to Lake Bridge Crossing. It's an add of $16,941.50. A payment to Keller Inc. for Project 65056, the Police Department Evidence Room addition, for $22,212.15. Item six is to construct the remaining 400 feet of sidewalk on Ida Street between Grove and Geneva Road as part of the Ida Street paving project. Item seven is the Department of Public Works to purchase an additional used side loading refuse truck with a dump body not to exceed $35,000. The Personnel Committee recommendations from March 19th for the creation of an engineering supervisor and training position effective April 9th to coincide with the next biweekly schedule and to promote the employee from Engineering Aid III. Step number five levels to step number three level hourly rate for the engineering supervisor in training position with future steps to occur after six months and then again after additional 12 months is outlined in the memorandum dated 3/15/2018. The modification of the public health educator position from 80% FTE to 100% FTE. The creation of an IT help desk technician position. And the...and to remove the operations captain position and create the deputy chief position in the police department. Are there any items that anyone would wish to have separated this evening?
Alderman Benner?
Item five.
Any others?
I think we need to take the ones that we deal with actual dollar amounts. So, I'm going to ask for number seven. And they're specific. And did Kevin said five?
Yes.
And I'm going to say four also.
Oops. I was just going to see if there was anyone else.
Right, that's why I knocked it off.
Oh, and I turned you back on, sorry. Is there anyone else who wishes to separate any items? If not, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda items...oops, excuse me, Mayor. I have one other one.
Okay.
Sorry. Item one.
Okay.
So, I'll continue if there's no...any others.
You can just make the motion if you'd like.
To approve the consent agenda items two, three, six, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
So, there's a motion, a second. I didn't catch who it was.
Alderman Grady?
Alderman Grady? Could we have a roll call vote at this time, please?
Well, she carried on roll call, 7-0.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry. I forgot it's 7-0.
Did you want to vote aye?
Yeah.
It seems to be working, so we'll try next time, and hopefully it'll work better. Do we have a motion for item one? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move that we approve the minutes of the Common Council of 3/19 of 2018.
There's a motion, a second. With Alderman Collier, is there discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I often very much respect...I almost called her Alderman Sandra Taylor, her comments, because she is very professional and knows very much of what she has to say up here. But sometimes she's not in our seats and doesn't actually get to understand why some of the things took place. The mayor didn't push, I want the community to know. The mayor did not push to put the property across the street from the post office on the agenda. I did. And here's the reason why. Because I did want transparency. Because we, a few months ago, already came to the terms of that agreement, which meant that we did reduce the price on that property and we did put some stipulations on. And the buyer agreed to every one of those things. And the mayor did have the right to just sell it because we already took that action. But I asked him, "Wouldn't it be better to be more transparent and open to allow the community to know what we're doing?" Because all of a sudden, the community is going to say, "Hey, I didn't know that that's sold." So, I wanted people to know that, "Hey, we've got a project in the works." And maybe the mistake was a preliminary conceptual drawing was placed in the agenda with it. That is not the exact what's going to happen there. You're absolutely right. Now, it needs to go to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission looks at all the parameters and they put it in place. And then, they come back to the Common Council, and we might tweak it or there may be negotiations with the developer too. So, we don't want to go to the Planning Commission to do all this kind of work, and then we didn't sell the property. So, you got to basically sell the property first. So, I wanted it on the agenda so that we would be open here, so that people would know about it. Outstanding question about the eminent domain situation. There's probably only two of us that really know about that question. And of course, your husband, being a former Alderman, definitely knew about that. And so, I was concerned about that myself, and I did contact the city attorney about that because I had the same concerns you did. And she did give me a...an answer that I was comfortable with. And therefore, I'll ask later on if she could maybe address that. And then, as far as the environmental...the environmental has been a big issue with me because we have been paying thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to take care of the environmental there. And I think it would have continued to this day had I not pushed that we finalized this because my feeling is, is this is about money. This is about...they would have continued with monitoring that situation without actually taking an environmental close on it. And they eventually did, and then they closed it out. So, the environment has been taken care of on that property. So, as far as the eminent domain, I think that's an important issue. And if, Mayor, if I could ask for some leeway, I'd ask that the city attorney if she wouldn't mind if she would address that particular issue. Because originally, what Sandra says is correct, but in the process of selling the property, it's different. And I'll have the city attorney explain that.
Since we are delving a little bit behind the scenes, I thought I'd clarify a little bit about the process too. Typically, when we would sell a property, the first thing that would happen is the Plan Commission would allow us to put that property on the market. They would give us that approval. Then, it would come to the council to get listed. And then, typically, the price or the conditions wouldn't meet 100% of whatever our listing agreement said. So, it would come back to the council to either accept or reject that. In this case, it was a full price offer, so it did not technically need to come to the council. And Alderman Sevenek and I sat down and we both more or less decided... And Alderman Sevigny and I sat down and we both more or less decided it would be best, like you said, for transparency's sake, to bring it to the council even though it didn't require it. So that's kind of the process that it would normally go through. And in this case, I thought, I think we both thought it would be best to bring it back to the council for just for those reasons, even though it didn't require that. And are you ready, Attorney Captain? I saw you furiously writing your notes, so...
When a property is acquired by eminent domain, it does require a public purpose for actually, before you can take that property. And that was done. So that's at the acquisition where you have to consider public purpose. And the public purpose, as I understand it, was due to environmental conditions that were on the property, so that needed to be cleaned up. And there apparently was no one willing to do that. Typically, the owner's gone or to some extent, they're just going to leave the property, abandon it, and then a municipality would come in and acquire it. Sometimes it does need to be acquired by eminent domain. And that is because you don't want the property just sitting there, particularly as a corridor or entrance into the city. And that would then allow redevelopment. So when it comes to the redevelopment, that's a sale that the common council then sells it to a third party. And that third party is buying it for a private purpose. So there is no public purpose that's involved in that sale to the third party. It's just when it's acquired by eminent domain, that's when you have to consider that it can only be acquired for a public purpose.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Alderman Sevigny for addressing this question in the way that he did. It was a good approach to it, through the council minutes. But there are a couple of things. One, I was going to ask the attorney to speak to the eminent domain issue, because it is kind of a touchy one, and I'm glad she did that. But one of the things that I kind of struggled with is that when we buy a property that, and we take ownership of it, one of the things I like about that is then we have some control over who we sell that lot to. And we weren't very transparent with that, and I kind of struggled with that, knowing what was going to be put there. And so from a transparency perspective, I kind of struggled with that a little bit. But I'm glad that you're able to explain the questions that were brought up and what we did. And I agree, knowing those other things, that he could have just purchased, this city could have just sold that lot straight up. We didn't have a lot of say in it in that point. But I wish that from an ownership perspective, we would have more input in that, because we own the lot. And part of that is to have control over how we're going to sell it to and control that development a little bit. Thank you.
So the attorney said she could comment on that a little bit as well, if you'd like.
If the common council wanted to limit the uses of the property or to whom it was going to be sold, that is something that needs to be identified in the listing agreement. In this listing agreement, it does not limit who can purchase it, but for the fact that it cannot be used solely for parking lot. And it's my recollection that that came up as a result of, at one point, somebody did want to acquire it just solely for that purpose, to put a parking lot. And the common council at that time discussed it and decided that that really would not be advantageous as an entrance into the city, just having a parking lot there.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when the public comes up to that microphone, I think they deserve answers. And I try to answer their questions, especially on issues like this. And I know that's your job, Mayor, too. And Ms. Taylor has told me many times, she sends emails to you and the attorney, and they're not answered. And I hope that's not...
This is not an appropriate time to be bashing staff. I do...
Talking about the issue with Ms. Taylor.
But I do respond to emails, and that's not appropriate to be saying that at this Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Looks like Alderman Nichols is working now. Much better.
Yes. Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item four is a change order for Pfeiffer Brothers. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I make a motion to approve a change order for Pfeiffer Brothers Construction Company Incorporated, contract number 2017-04, Fox River Loop the Lake Bridge Crossing, for an addition of $16,941.50. This is for change order number five.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item five is a payment to Keller Inc. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I make a motion to approve a payment for Keller Incorporated, project number 65056 for the Police Department Evidence Room Edition, for $22,212.15. This is payment number four, and it's final.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Collier. Would you have discussion, Alderman Benner?
I do.
Go ahead.
I have two quick questions for the chief, if he doesn't mind. Have you moved into that evidence room, though?
The evidence storage area, yes. Property is starting to be moved into that area.
Okay. And the other question is, when are they going to take the sign down in front of the police station?
I don't know. That's a great question. I'm sure it was frozen into the ground. And it might be frozen into the ground now for another couple of days. But I would assume once of the thaw, I can certainly reach out to them to move it along.
All right, thank you.
You betcha.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item seven is the authority to purchase an additional side loading refuse truck from the, to the Department of Public Works. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that the Public Works Department purchase an additional used side loading refuse truck with the dump body not to exceed $35,000.
Second.
And Mayor, is this coming from the equipment replacement fund, then? Okay.
Let's see if I can figure out. Wrong one. I think we're going to...
I think I keep hitting it at the same time you do. Yes, it is coming from the equipment replacement fund.
So did you want to explain where it's coming from, though?
We got two dump trucks this year that were budgeted for. They were budgeted for $215,000 apiece. We ended up getting them for a little under $195,000. So we had about $41,000 in savings. So this is just utilizing some of that savings. And I do want to point out that the only way that we are going to do this is if we actually do find a truck that is available for that price. If we can't find one, then we can't find one. But it at least gives us the option, too.
And this would be used for?
For the second leaf collection truck, back truck.
Do you have some other questions?
Yes, I do, after you made that comment. I feel very strongly about this. One of the services that our community as taxpayers really appreciate is the leaf collection. And we do a superior job here in Manasha. And part of the reason is because our own crews have been innovative in how we do this. And a lot of people out there don't know that a lot of these inventions and things that take place, our own crews, they created this at a great savings and a wonderful cost. So if for some reason, not to exceed $35,000, and you find one that you can't get over, please come back to this body, because there is money in the equipment replacement fund. So I mean, that's why we set that fund up, so that we could do things like this and not necessarily worry about a city council trying to slash all these dollars just to, you know, for political purposes, so...
We will certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Josh, anytime we can reduce and go from two men, sometimes three men, to one man, manpower, that's greatly appreciated for the budget of the city. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 3/22/2018 through 3/29/2018, in the amount of $1,089,299.91.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion for those recommended for approval this evening? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017-2019 licensing period, per the memo dated March 28, 2018.
Is there... There's a motion and a second by, I think, Alderman Collier?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll get to you in a minute. Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven zero.
So we do have one individual that was recommended for denial this evening, and I'm, is Mr. Spoke here this evening? Is, do we have unanimous consent from the council to hear from Mr. Spoke this evening? If you'd like to come up to the...
I'd like to thank you guys for your time today. I've been in the Valley for approximately 10 years. Of that time, I've bartended in the Valley for eight. That includes being the bar manager at the VFW in Appleton, and also the bar manager over at Timeless Tavern. Currently, I'm a full-time student, and the only way to maintain that status is by going back into bartending. In my time out here, I've never had an infraction against me. I've never sold to a minor or any had any other issues at any of the bars that I worked at. I'm asking that Manasha allow me to bartend out here. Currently, I do have a license in NINA. I've carried that since 2012. And if there's any questions of anything concerning it, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions this evening? Alderman Taylor?
How many OWIs have you had?
I've had three. Two was, I believe, 17 years ago, and then the last one was, I believe, nine years ago.
Okay. And currently, do you have a driver's license?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Captain?
The most recent, I believe it was a citation, is that from 2017? Is that a citation that was issued to you?
Yeah. My dog got out of the fence and ran over to the neighbor's yard, so I had a warning for animal at large. And because he went over, he started licking the owner and the dog, there was a molested passenger by a vehicle citation that I got for him, too. The officer said he gave that to me because it was lesser than the other ticket that he could give me, which was about $70,000 less than what he could have.
And then I noticed, operating after revocation, there are three convictions for those. Those were quite a while ago, 2009, 2010.
Yeah. That was at the same time I was trying to obtain my license. I do believe I got the license back and it got dropped down to driving without a license on person for those, but I'm not quite sure. It's been a while for those.
And then I believe those are, those weren't just citations, correct?
Yes.
Those were actually misdemeanors?
Sitations. I think once I got it down or went and got my license, then it got dropped down to that, just a city citation for those, I believe.
And then for all of these convictions, did you follow the, what you were supposed to do with regard to paying fines or forfeitures or everything like that?
Currently, I've paid a substantial amount of money. Most of my fines are pretty much paid off or close to being paid off.
Okay. And so some you're still making payments on, is that correct?
Yeah. I believe I've roughly paid about, with my DUI that I caught, about $7,500 currently.
Okay.
So...
And that's it.
Alderman Sevigny?
I'm just looking at this, and to me, I mean, the most serious offense was nine years ago. And what does our timeframe tell us, the certain period of time? How many years, if I could ask? I have it here, I just don't want to dig it up.
Sure. The City of Manasha does have policy guidelines. And one of them is a guideline regarding what is considered to be a habitual law offender. So that would be somebody who, over a period of time, and that would be basically decided by the common council, somebody who shows a lack of regard for the law and would have multiple convictions. And we do have a written policy where two or more offenses within one year, three or more within five years.
Five years.
Or six or more within the preceding 10 years. And that can include all types of convictions. So it can include both citations and/or convictions, misdemeanor or felony convictions. And so that is the guideline here. It goes back over a period of 10 years, and there's multiple convictions. So there are citations and the felony conviction. The felony conviction did occur quite a long time ago.
Okay. Um, where are you looking to work in a tavern or at a convenience store or at a grocery store?
At a tavern. Red Liners, the owner Ken is right over there.
Well, I'm looking at this, and, you know, as far as being habitual, yes, to a degree. But, you know, people get caught in a trap to a certain point in life, and it's like, if no one's going to allow them to work, how can they ever get ahead? And it seems as though the, any offense that you've had are somewhat minor in the recent years. So looking at that, I would beg you to do your very best to never have any type of citation in the future. I'll move that we allow for his operator's license at this time for Mr. Spoke.
So a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. I'm Alderman Collier. I'm Alderman Collier.
You said you bartended in Nina?
Yes.
Do you still have an active license in Nina?
Yeah, I have it on.
Okay, that's okay. And did you, at the VFW in Appleton?
Yes.
So you've had, you had to have an active license there also?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to school?
Yes, I, I'm getting my associate's in welding fabrication. I'm just about to finish up my first semester.
So knowing that if you did something wrong, you would probably cost the owner potentially his license?
Yes, sir.
So you think you're going to be an excellent employee and stay in the guidelines and hope everything goes perfect?
Yes, I've actually worked with him prior, and I had no issues at all.
Can you get that done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? The motion is to approve the license.
Motion carried on, roll call six one.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
Item three is a discussion of televised council meetings. Alderman, Alderman Sevanik?
He's got it, I think. Oh. Did you have, did you want to go, or?
I was on the phone.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to place this on the agenda, because, you know, other communities have already stepped up to the plate. You know, we, like, former Alderman Langdon said, we were the leaders when it came to televising council meetings, and now we're behind. And just to help the public again, the reason the meetings aren't being televised is because up in Green Bay, an attorney decided that our meetings need to be closed caption. And closed captioning isn't a simple process, and it can be extremely expensive for us. So I asked that this be placed on the agenda, so we have a discussion. What are we going to do? What, what do you feel we should do? I have a personal, I've always been for televising the council meetings. I think there's no better way of expressing local government and letting them know what's happening in your community. Mayor and I kind of disagree on this, but, you know, when we pay our bill with the cable company, or U-verse, or, there's a franchise fee that we pay, and we're entitled to watching these council meetings, because I pay for that, and I want to watch my council meetings. So I think that if anything, the money should come from that particular point, from, from that item. You know, there's almost two-hundred thousand dollars we receive in franchise fees. That's a lot of money, I believe it's, I think the last time I was told it was one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, something like that. So I thought it was going to be less, because it seems like a lot of people are leaving, you know, the cable and that, and getting their antennas, because it's getting very expensive. But if I'm going to pay it, I want to be able to watch the meetings. But, but I've only had three people approach me, asking for the, to have these televised. I've heard from other Aldermen that they've had people contact them. So I just wanted to be able to place this on the agenda, let's have some dialogue, and let's decide what we want to do, because the other communities, surrounding communities already are being televised with closed caption.
So, from Alderman Sevanik's question, we did dig up what the franchise fee payment was over the years. It went from a high of two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars in two thousand fifteen, and it's dropped to a hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars last year. We also, I also looked up a little bit about what the franchise fee is for. A cable television franchise fee is an annual fee charged by the local government to a private cable television company as compensation for using public property it owns as right-of-way for its cable. The US cable television services are provided by a private for-profit company, and cable television providers must sign a franchise fee to use those public right-of-ways. So this fee is to compensate the city for allowing them to use that space within its community. They are entitled to a maximum of five percent of gross revenues. So just so everyone kind of knows the history behind franchise fees, and where those fees are going within the city for a total dollar amount, I thought that information would be useful. I'm not sure who's next, so we're going to do this. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think back to the days when I put a recorder up on my desk here, and the whole place fell apart, that I couldn't record a meeting, and I brought forward this televising council meetings. It took three years, and I had stepped down, and my brother Mike sat up here with Alderman Sevanik, and they finally pushed it, the financing, through, and then we got, we got our televising meetings. Knocking on the doors this past couple of months, I've had over a dozen people tell me that they really miss it. They want this back on TV, and they enjoy being part of their government, they enjoy being informed on what's going on in their government, and I think it's a great opportunity to have transparency in our government. And the people deserve it, and certainly the people that pay the franchise fees deserve it, too. Thank you. And a lot of elderly people don't have the internet, and they don't have computers.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you. Just to clarify on some of the verbiage or costing on this, so we're looking at a dollar per minute, correct?
Yes.
And is it just on the council meetings, or is it on the public works meetings that night, or whatever?
Whatever we record for the night.
Okay.
Or whatever we want to put on. We could, we could say that after thirty minutes, it just gets cut off, and that's all we put on, too, if that's what you want it to do.
Well, I was just...
But that would be kind of silly, but...
I was just going to have Alderman Taylor, just when he does his public works, then he'll have to speed those minutes, those meetings up a little bit, okay? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. And as Alderman Sevanik and Taylor said, I've also had constituents asking me, how come they're not on, and they do miss the meetings? And I know it comes at a cost, but Alderman Sevanik actually mentioned something to me that was actually a little bit intriguing also, and it segues into what you just said, is that we don't have to televise everything, including the committee minutes, or the committee meetings. We can restrict it to just the council meetings, so the, so the residents can get their basic council meeting in and keep the cost down that way. I mean, I'm, I'm for looking into this, and I think it's something that we should be doing, because it's obvious from the discussions I've had with residents that they do miss the meetings, and they would like to see them back on TV. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was kind of reflecting back on that meeting that Alderman Taylor was talking about. I had, had a Boy Scout troop in the gallery that evening, and to say that they were entertained is, to say the least. And we had to have a little meeting down on First Floor after the city council meeting, and explain what happened there, and why everybody was so passionate about the discussion that they were having. And it was, it was quite interesting, that meeting, but there was really a lot of energy that went into those discussions, and to make that happen. But as, as I saw this on the agenda, of course, it was discussion, and my first thing is, well, what's our intended outcome of tonight's meeting? But the last time we talked about this, we discussed those costs, and there are a couple different ways of looking at it. I thought it was a per-word cost, per-minute cost, things like that. And I don't think anybody actually came back to us with what that would really look like at the end of the year, based off of what, how many minutes of meeting we had, say, last year, or something like that, to kind of give us an overall view of what that might actually look like. And before, I think before, I'd feel comfortable going forward with it. Certainly, I'd like to see the meetings televised, but I really like to know what the impact's truly going to be on that. And if somebody has that information, I'd, I'd like to have that. And I, I haven't had anybody approach me to ask me about that, but I think that there's just so many folks that have access to the internet. When people do ask me about it, a few have, and I just say, well, you can stream it, you can, you can stream it, or you can see it on the internet, or it is available on YouTube, and they're all, oh, okay, well, I can look there, or something, but, but obviously, not everybody has access, does have access to cable TV, as some people said. It's, it is getting very expensive for some folks, and like Alderman Sevanik said, that people are starting to eliminate their, their cable, because it is getting so expensive. I know every single month that bill goes up, and my wife has to tell me how expensive it is, and how I have to stop watching racing shows, and sports shows, and everything else, you know, and start watching what's on, what's on, what's available on the antenna, but...
So you'll be watching the Lifetime?
What's that?
The Lifetime Channel and Hallmark movies, right?
Those are, those are on cable, and she's a bit of a TLC person, I think, but... So I, before we go forward, and I'm certainly not opposed to it, but I would like to know what the impact's actually going to be, and what that's, what that's, what that's going to look like.
At the initial point, when we first learned about this, we did, the city clerk and I did sit down and look at the billing that we'd received for last year, I believe, and if you looked at the dollar per minute for the entire portion that we taped, it would be somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars a year to do that. We did not look at separating the council meetings from the committee meetings. As Alderman Kruger had said, I, we could do that, though, and find out what the average would be if we looked at just council meetings as well.
So that ten thousand dollar figure did include all of our committee meetings?
Yes.
And things like that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sevanik?
Well, I like the discussion that we're having, because that's why I wanted this on the agenda. Yeah, I guess, Mayor, you told me the City of Nina does just the council meetings?
Yes.
And, you know, if that's something we want to start off with, so that maybe we have the funding to do that. Actually, I read old minutes, I was actually one that made the motion that we do both the council meetings and the committee meetings. I actually think more gets done in the committee, and people, you know, we have more discussion. That's why our ratings are the highest. Our ratings are the highest, and we're a little community. But what I've been told by people is that we explain things better, that they watch our meetings, because it's more understood. Otherwise, I mean, what's the big deal if we stand up here and say, I make a motion that we do this, and second, and then we go, okay, aye, and then we're all done, and we don't talk about it? So I, I personally like watching it on YouTube, even though I do have U-verse. It just comes in better. It just, it, it's better. U-verse does a terrible job, absolute terrible job, of televising these meetings. Spectrum does a better job of it. So I agree with Alderman Benner that, yeah, let's get some numbers first. I mean, I didn't put this on so that we voted on it tonight. I put it on to see if the body said, no, it's too much money, we're not going to do that. So I, I would like to do it, but I just wanted to know what the rest of my colleagues, how they feel about it, so. Take it.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By not putting on the committee meetings, then the public is just kind of seeing their government act in front of them, where the committee meetings are two weeks before, and then if there's an issue, they can call their Aldermen, and we can talk about it before the, the council meeting. So that's one benefit to having the committee meetings on. And also, Mayor Alderman Sevanik asked about the Oshkosh. We used to be televised through the university system down there instead of Green Bay, and have we looked into that yet?
I don't know that we've ever been televised through Oshkosh. We used to be televised through Kimberly, through Time Warner's offices there. I did make several attempts to reach out to the person who's the director down there, and I have not been able to either reach him, or he has not returned a message.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, if I would have got the microphone after Alderman Sevanik, I had a perfect segue into what I wanted to say. He commented on possibly not doing the committee meetings, and one of the things I feel strongly about committee meetings is that if we discuss something in committee, it always gets followed up in the city council. And when folks see that in committee, then that gives them an opportunity to come here and speak on it before we act on it. And the city council will contact somebody, one of their Aldermen or something, to, to have dialogue about that, and then provide some input, so that when you come to the city council to actually take action, then they've had the opportunity to have that input. So I would feel pretty strongly that I think we should do committee meetings if we're going to do this. That's my opinion, thank you.
No further discussion?
Wanted to go on amendments, because they need a budget adjustment.
Is there anyone that doesn't want to talk about that? Okay.
Well, I guess I think it's very important that we tape these meetings. I think the ten thousand dollars is the big question. We, we fight for nickels and dimes, as you see by the, the franchise fees, less and less people are having cable TV. Even my parents have a smart TV that you can press the button and watch it on YouTube anytime you want. So I'm wondering if this is the best use of our money or not, or if we're doing this just because this is how we've always done it. But I do think it's important that we're transparent, and people have access to those. So the big question is, at what dollar amount does it become too much to put it on cable TV versus just the internet? That's the question that we're looking for. So what you'd like me to bring back to the next meeting is the cost to televise just the council meetings, the cost to televise both?
Both.
Well, I get you both numbers, basically. And then, is there anything else that you guys would like me to bring back? I'll reach out to Oshkosh one more time, and see if I can get ahold of someone down there as well. And I see both John and Stan. We'll let Stan go first.
I just have a feeling that with time, this is going to change. I, I think the costs are, are going to go down. It's, it's going to be competitive or something, because, you know, a dollar a minute, that's ridiculous. I don't know where they get that from.
We did get costs up to two-fifty a minute from other companies, too, so...
You know what? I, I mentioned this, I think, to, I forget who, maybe it was Alderman Taylor, but, you know, on our own phones, I can talk into my phone today, and it will print exact, when I want to send someone a text, a lot of times I just talk it, okay? And I think technology will change within the next year or two, where even closed captioning might be different, too, for us, and we won't even be talking about this, so...
John D. Jova?
I'm assuming with this proposal that there would be some funding recommendations that you would like us to provide to the council? Because if you add the program, there is room in the two thousand eighteen budget to add roughly the equivalent of about thirty thousand dollars to stay under our spending level threshold that we have from the state of Wisconsin. So there would be room to add something like this, we just need to find a funding source for it, and then a sustainable funding source going in future years. Just as, just as a side comment, I did reach out to the City of Oshkosh, to my counterpart there, the Administrative Services Director at Oshkosh today, late, late this afternoon, and he said that he's got two people that he would be willing to talk with us, the mayor and myself, and maybe Pam on that, of just what they're, they have a different interpretation of what Green, the City of Green Bay has presented to those of us that are under this ruling from Green Bay. So they've got a different interpretation. So I guess I kind of think we should listen to what Oshkosh's position is on this, and what they're, how they're handling it, and just seeing, you know, what other options that we can, would have available.
Alderman Grady?
Well, I just run some quick numbers. If you have a four-hour meet, a four-hour session, six to ten, we don't probably go that long, a dollar a minute, so you're talking two-hundred-and-forty dollars a night, times two, month, you meet twice in, twenty-four times in a year, so that's like fifty-seven-hundred bucks. So, and that, and that's going to ten o'clock, and a lot of times we don't go that far, so...
We have three budget sessions as well. We just took it right off the...
Yeah, so it's not...
So we'll get you the numbers again.
We're well under that ten thousand.
But there must have been some that went much longer than that?
Yes.
Because that was the actual billing that we received from UW Fox for, for theirs. So we'll get you those things, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting again. Item four is the regional fire department hiring process. Do we have a motion? That's right, Steve Wann... I'm sorry, Steve wanted that one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the regional fire department hiring process for the Fox Valley Technical College effective March 8th, 2018 through March 7th, 2019, as recommended by the Nina-Manassas Fire Rescue Joint Fire Commission on 3/28/2018.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call seven-zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Sandra DeBille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Basically, I'm here because my name was brought up. First of all, I do take issue with the, with the mayor wanting to rebuttal a member of the gallery because that is, typically, he has no debate with a member of the gallery and that's been his position except for tonight. Secondly, in all due respect to Alderman Sevanek, a member of the public is not privy to most of the information that you have. So I go by what is in the packet and when the meetings are televised, which aren't always the case. And that's what I have to rely on. Now, at the last meeting that was televised, I specifically came tonight because of the fact that you had now mentioned in your comments that the plan commission will work out details regarding this 87 Racine Street and then it will come back to the council. The mayor specifically said at that meeting, it will not come back to the council. My other comment is, the mayor said this did not even need to come before the council because they made a full price offer. However, their offer contained four contingencies, so that wasn't simply just a full price offer. They put contingencies in there for ingress and egress and that the buyer had to come up with the financing and the plan commission had to approve things and that, uh, the buyer secure the needed financing. And then staff put in their own contingency. So, we have staff working in the capacity of the plan commission. That's my issue. This all should have been dealt with at the plan commission. And as far as referrals to the plan commission, in several cases, there are mandatory referrals to the plan, plan commission prior to its coming to the common council. And I suggest the attorney look up Scanlon versus the City of Manassas, 1962, with regard to that, um, and read your state statute and read your own city code. And as far as Eminem Tomaine goes, as I stated before, um, she can look up the state constitution and I'll give her right here. I'm not an attorney, by the way. Um, I believe it was Article One, Chapter 13? Article One, Section 13 of the Wisconsin Constitution that says that this is not just for a public use where, okay, the city's going to benefit from this development, it's actual possessed by the public. That's, there is a big difference. And that's a result of Kieslow versus New London. Thank you.
Just to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would adjourn.
So, motion and a second to adjourn. I just wanted to remind everyone that the next council meeting is on Tuesday night, April 17th, so don't show up on Monday. All those in, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.